Camera is on.
Regular Board meeting, the board, they all rise and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk would please call a roll.
Moretka, here, Jones.
Here.
Marsh.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Pam.
Here.
Anne.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval or corrections of the minutes from our September 9th regular Board meeting. Are there any corrections or additions? If not, we will entertain a motion to approve. Make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Pam, seconded by trustee Jones.
Pam?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Moretka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes. Counts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending September 7th for fifty-one thousand, eight sixty-seven forty-three, accounts payable, the general fund, fifty-four thousand, four hundred and forty and forty-four cents. And, oh, that's correct.
No, this total was just this.
Yeah.
That's separate.
That's separate, okay. So our total for the accounts payable is fifty-four thousand, four hundred and forty and forty-four cents. Any questions about the payroll or the accounts payable? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Parker and seconded by trustee Moretka.
Parker?
Yes.
Moretka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes. Next, any public comment or questions? If not, we will move on to reports of committees, village administrator report.
Sorry, what's wrong? It's playing with Google Maps. I just added a little feature on my report and I'm going to try to add it every time going forward, number of information requests or community contacts that I get, just so you guys have a sense. Most of the time they're mostly zoning related, ladies at the front desk do a really good job of doing that, community contacts and interacting with the public. And so, but this one I think is important because we do, and then, and I can quantify them if you, if you would like me to, but I just added that feature. We, ironically, that we have interest in the Teresa's Pizza Building, in the downtown under economic development here, we have the gentleman here that's going to talk to you a little later in the agenda about the, their old warehouse, but now we have interest in the manufacturing facility that was in the downtown, so that's pretty exciting. If you have been wondering about the wedding venue, that had come through our midst a few, several, on several occasions, Bobby Kelly and her wedding venue, she has been looking elsewhere in unincorporated Monee into the north, so I don't know that she'll be looking in Peatown anymore. And that, that was brought to my attention, not by her, but by someone else, so I saw that on the local county agenda. So that's unfortunate, but that is the way that things are sometimes. The site that she's looked at looks a little bit more appropriate than I think that anything she found here, so. That's, I wanted to bring that to your attention as a follow-up. So we did a walkthrough of this facility, we did an audit, an energy efficiency audit. So hopefully we can look at budgeting for that in the future, kind of replacing all of these lights with LED lights, maybe getting rid of some of the lights that we don't need in certain areas. And it's a grant program with ComEd and they pay about sixty percent, village will pay forty percent, so it's not in our budget now, but it was something I wanted to look at. And the public works building already is LED proficient, but this building is not, so there's quite a lot we could do here. It would pay for itself and then over the next two years with the energy we would save, so. So we'll look at that at budget time and see what we can, what we can come up with. So those are just a few of the highlights. Any other questions?
Yeah, you mentioned that, you know, press requested that the board package be included, is that an issue or what? You said there was maybe some tech, technology.
Yeah, well, we, when you scan a document, it becomes a picture, and so pictures take up a lot of bandwidth or they go very large. And so it's not something we can just upload on the website, it would take up too much bandwidth on our website to upload those, so what we need to do is buy some software that would allow us to just have individual, take individual electronic documents and compress them together and upload it like that. And we just don't have that software right now, we'll have to research the best one and buy it. And it's very doable, it's a great idea. And, so but in the meantime, I think we've found a solution to be able to get the press, you know, the entire board packet. But we would definitely like to be able to do that and then we could just have the agenda and have all the entire board packet compressed together and then uploaded onto the same platform on the, on the website that we do now, but we just, it would be too large and it would probably crash or use too much bandwidth and then we'd be in trouble.
Can you make up something? There's a sidewalk at Corny and Conrad, it looks like they're digging new driveway and excavating some dirt to put on the sidewalk and it's like blocking the sidewalk and it's been that way for at least three or four weeks.
Oh, okay.
Didn't know if we could send something over there.
Yeah, what's the address of it?
It's at the intersection of Conrad and Corny.
It's at that big house that they're working on, it's like a model, so.
I'm not sure, it's just redoing a driveway, but.
Yeah, it is.
On the south side. Yeah, right, yeah. Blocking the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Has been for weeks.
Anything else for the village administrator? Hey, police chief report. Is it right? Engineer report?
I have nothing to report.
And treasurer's report was included in your packet, any questions on that?
If you have any, you know, you can give them to me and I will pass them along to Marcy for you to, and I'll give you an answer, or you can email her the question, just ask them, that way we can better anticipate what, you know, you might be curious about and I can maybe have an answer to you ahead of time.
What are the funds going to be moved?
Um, I just signed another document today for PFM, so Marcy was going to go ahead and get the first Midwest, first Midwest funds moved this week and then as soon as we get the paperwork finished up for PFM, she would move those over shortly thereafter, so. I mean, if there's anything on the treasurer's report that you'd like to see added or anything, let me know, just any questions you have, don't hesitate.
There's no questions on that, we'll move on to old business, which there is none. New business is the Peatown Girl Scouts request permission to canvas the village October 1st to the 20th for fall product sales and then October 18th and 19th for Helping Hands food bag drive distribution and January 1st to the 19th of 2020 for cookie sales. So it looks like we've got some girls here, like to introduce themselves and.
We are Peyton, Lila, Kaitlin. We respect the Girl Scouts of Service Unit 7-1 for the Girl Scouts request permission to cons non-perishable food and personal products for the Helping Hands Food Pantry serving the needs of local families at risk. This is our chance to take action and do our part to better our community.
Girl Scout bounty is planning to go door to door throughout the village passing through out paper bags with donation instructions. The weekend of October 18th, 20th, they will return to collect donations left out for them on Saturday after 10:26 from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. and then deliver to the Helping Hands Food Pantry.
We are also requesting. We are also requesting from permission to ask neighbors to purchase from our fall product category sale 10-12, 10-20 and cookies 1-12, 1-19.
The Girl Scouts will be sure to follow all safety rules and be always here. Consider it and caring all these activities throughout the village. Thank you.
Good job, girl.
Good work.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Did you guys sign in?
We did.
Put their hands.
We did, thank you.
Thank you. All right, entertain a motion to approve those requests.
I'll motion it.
Second. It's moved by trustee Moretka, moved by trustee Parker.
Moretka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes. All right, next is the Peatown Boy Scout Troop 315 request permission to canvas the village to sell annual spaghetti dinner tickets on October 14th and 21st as a group and also individually during that week. I think that the Boy Scouts have a court of honor this evening, so that's why there's nobody here representing them. You all got the information in your packet, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Second?
Second.
Approved, I'm sorry, it's been a motion by trustee Pam, seconded by trustee Jones.
Pam?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Moretka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Marsh?
Yes. All right, next is Iroquois paving request for payment of five percent retainage held on the 2018 street surfacing project in amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Sure, you want to comment on that?
Sure, it's just similar to the one we had for the sidewalk, I think at last meeting, it's the contractor's asking for their five percent for last year's project, public person reviewed it, so it's good to release the retention.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion?
Motion, second.
Been moved by trustee Parker, seconded by trustee Pam to approve the Iroquois paving request.
Parker?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Jones?
Moretka?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes. Okay, next is the fence variance request to install six-foot vinyl privacy fence extending eight feet into the required thirty-foot setback on a quarter lot by M. Straven, 224 degrees. So Mr. Straven, would you like to step to the podium and kind of tell us what you'd like?
Hi, guys. We just moved back, wife and I, my wife Pam and I just moved back from Arizona, too high. So we missed the cold, missed the cold and the snow and the thirty below.
Welcome back.
So I got to buy a snowball and that, but yeah, we just like to get the fence moved away from the house because the deck was built so close to the side of the house. I mean, if you, I'd like somebody to come out and look, I don't know if anybody has drove by or anything, looked at it, but it's like literally two feet from the side of the house. We have a, a large, not anxious dog, fizzy dog, and we're afraid he's going to bolt over it, I mean, it's simple as that, I guess, you know, but it is, like I said, two feet, so. I know it's, you know, I think I had, I had a couple copies in of all the, I think we were twenty-three feet from the sidewalk and I tried to throw as many dimensions as I can on there, so, you know, so hopefully we can do some.
I think Google Maps is a little out of date on my overhead, your house wasn't even there at the time.
Yeah, yeah, the house was there, so, but anyway, you know, like I say, if you wanted to look at it, you know, hopefully.
You just wanted eight feet further away from the house.
Yes, yes.
From the rear edge of the house, correct?
From the rear edge of the house.
Yes, we're not going forward anywhere, I mean, it's a pretty big lot in far as blocking the view of traffic or pedestrians or anything like that and, you know, no.
And otherwise, going at the back, the back, you'll be on the lot line, on the other side, be on the lot line.
On the north side and the west side, yes, on the, on the lot line.
And it's going up on the north side, it goes up to not quite the front of your garage, right?
Like ten, ten feet back, so it's not too obtrusive at the front there, just enough to put the garbage cans up by the sidewalk and, you know, keep everything looking neat and clean over on that side.
Any discussion?
All right, thank you.
I know we approved similar in that eight, ten foot range, I don't personally find those of choosing or.
And it's still back of the house and it's still really far away from the sidewalk.
Did you have something else?
Just, and you know, another, I heard my wife mentioned it, because the deck is so elevated too, you know, I mean, it puts the fence just a little bit lower than the, than the deck, so.
I mean, I've driven by there, it seems like there's quite a bit of space that, you know, it's not blocking the view of that turn at all, so. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
A motion.
To approve?
To approve, sorry, yes.
Is there a second?
Well, seconded.
It's been moved by trustee Moretka, seconded by trustee Pam to approve the fence variance request extending eight feet into the required thirty-foot setback.
Moretka?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
And?
Yes. Okay, next we have business registration, Caleb Chemical, 525 Tucker Road, so this is the Teresa Pizza Building that's out on Tucker Road. And you're a business owner?
Yes, I am.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Nice to meet you all. Frank Pulakowski, I'm the president and owner of Caleb Chemical.
Tell us a little bit about your business.
So we're a distributor for the personal care industry. Many of you have looked at my website, it's quite dated. If you've looked at the website, it's quite dated, it still carries a lot of the products that we did in the past, probably within the past four years, we've directed it more towards personal care and food industry. We're no longer in the paint and coatings industry as where I was big before. I've been in the business for twenty-two years, I've personally owned the business since 2014. I used to have a location in Elpro Village, Illinois, I currently live in Manhattan, Illinois, so this is a lot more convenient for me. My father's with me, he's been in the industry for forty-two years, he's semi-retired now, is what he likes to say. And that's about it, just the business. Some of our bigger clients are Johnson &amp; Johnson, Bath &amp; Body Works, and we do the ingredients for the shower gels, shampoos, lotions, lip balms and baby shampoos. So if you look at the back of your bottle tonight and go to wash your hair, those ingredients that are in there is what I do, what I suck.
If you haven't been over there lately, take a ride and you're going to be lost because of the building, you painted the outside of the building, it looks so different.
Where we're doing the whole building, pretty much, the footprint of the building is going to stay the same, but with the materials that we'll be having there, they all go into personal care and food, so it has to be clean, sanitary and safe. So top to bottom, front to back, new paint, all cleaned out, we'll be updating a lot, if not everything, by, you know, end of the year. It'll be pretty much a brand new building.
So there's no manufacturing going on there, it's just repackaging and?
We, we don't even repackage, we relabel, we code, spec the products to be shipped, we get them in, code them, label them, spec them and ship them out.
I see.
How many people do you employ?
Currently, two. I'm pretty busy. I've got a lot on my plate. That's one of the reasons that the building came into play, the business has grown a lot and that's, will become corporate. So I will be looking for local people, not only in administrative, but also warehouse positions, sales, maybe possibly truck drivers, stuff of that nature.
Do you have any outside storage?
We do not.
He's an I-2, I mean, he's an I-1 zoning.
Currently, the building surprises what we need.
How many trucks do you run to deliver?
We currently have our own, we don't have any, we use free company and right now, you know, we'll probably average maybe four to six a week.
You mean being explosive?
No hazards.
Okay, any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve the business registration.
Motion.
Yes.
It's been moved by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Moretka.
Jones?
Yes.
Moretka?
Yes, sorry.
Parker?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
And Marsh?
Yes.
Welcome.
Appreciate your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, next is ordinance, and this will be nineteen dash three seven, ordinance correcting a Scrivner's error in the boundary description and boundary map for the village of Peatown Business Development District Number One. Would you like to expound on that or?
I could.
You want to explain what Scrivner is?
It's a. Yeah, it's just a, in a little.
Legal term?
Little error and it means that, so there's one house that got included in our map and in our description list, in our legal description, that shouldn't be in this map because it's not in the village limits. So there's, there's a house just south of Terry's, it's not in the village and, you know, it looks like it should be because it's right, right in our, I don't know, in the thick of our boundaries, so we have to remove it because it's unincorporated. So that is the only change we're making to the Business Development District.
Okay, any questions though?
Is it just south of Terry?
It's just south of Terry, so if I, oh, it's.
Is that house in between Terry's and the gas station?
Correct, correct, that's it. This is so small.
There's actually, there's a dune next to just north of the gas station.
That's in the village of.
And then there's like an older house.
And it's the older house.
Were we going to look?
Yes.
We haven't seen that in.
We could force annex it because it's surrounded.
It's not really a residential district and if it got dozed and somebody built something that was more in tune with what's going on.
Yeah, we could annex it.
It wouldn't cost them anything, would it?
Not to annex it, not if they voluntarily annex it, yeah, they can just petition and we can annex it, yeah.
Well, actually, it looks like property, you know.
Donna says yes.
It's Demus, I believe, it's a married couple and they didn't want to annex back when we were having the big push because they wanted to replace the old building that they had and you can't have that inside the doors and windows, so they wouldn't have.
That is what I read.
Yeah.
How long ago was that?
Those years, twenty-five years.
Really?
I don't think it took that long, but yeah.
All right, so no other questions on this, entertain a motion to approve ordinance nineteen dash three seven.
Motion.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Parker, seconded by trustee Pam, it's been ordered nineteen dash three seven.
Parker?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Moretka?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes. Item G, swimming pool code update. So in your packet, the, the building committee met and I guess, who's on the building committee? Who's the chair? You want to talk about what you guys?
Oh, I guess we did have a resident come into a board meeting a couple meetings ago, expressing some concern about a portable pool in his neighborhood. We took it up in the building committee, we had the building inspector there and it sounds like the code is, is pretty straightforward, we're not rewriting or making up new ordinance and policies, we're just following the code that's there and the code says twenty-four inches is what describes a temporary or portable pool versus a permanent pool, so.
So did we, we, this has been our code all along, we just weren't enforcing it? Is that what it was?
Well, we're, I would say we're, a twenty-four inch deep is, is this, they describe it as a swimming pool.
Right.
So we're enforcing the rules, but we, what we're not doing is requiring building permits for on-ground pools.
But, so I mean, just going back to this complaint that the last event had.
If I, if I'm, if I'm not going to speak for.
But wasn't this, the one pool was supposedly four feet, forty inches?
Yeah, I think they're getting bigger.
Right.
More affordable and that's really the pressing issue.
And so there's barriers, so I think the resident's concern was it should have required a barrier, it should have required a fence.
Right.
The code said that it doesn't, a barrier, it pools that are twenty-four inches or more in depth require, do require a barrier.
Right.
But the size of the pool can function as a barrier if in fact they are that size all the way around. So, so in other words, it can't be, you know, if it dips in that size down, because sometimes pools are buried down into the ground, so they have to be measured that way all the way around and if the ladder is able to be locked upright, so.
So what's the height, what was the height of the barrier, what does that have?
It has to be forty, it has forty-eight inches. So if it's lower in the hill, it has to have a.
So if you have a pool that's forty inches all the way around, above ground, you don't need a fence or anything?
Cozens.
Really? So the outside of the pool is.
It functions as the barrier.
It's almost the ladders, like.
Yes, yes.
So if you have permanent ladders and you build these steps, you still need them.
Okay, but so now what we're saying is though that if those pools need to have Okay, but so now, what we're saying is though that if those pools need to have a building permit?
Yes.
And so if they put one up, if it's a, like, some of these are just temporary, right? That you take the water out and they collapse, and you fold them up and put them away, right? So every spring, they'd have to have a building permit? Is that how it works?
It works out.
I, I don't think that they would every spring, I mean, as long, unless they're, unless they're a new, you know...
Do people take down forty-eight inch pools?
Yeah, I used to do it.
Sure do.
Put it up in the spring, take it down in the fall, and I had to put a fence around my yard for it.
That's the point.
Blooded it serious.
But I mean, because now they're like big blow-up pools, right? Like they get...
Burflayed of plastic frames.
And so once you take the water out, the...
Yeah.
There's no, you know, it's not supported anymore, right?
Right. And some of these portable pools even have filters.
Right.
That are not adhering to the ordinances in place for electricity to it.
And the location in which they put rear yard.
So you can't just have an extension cord going over your house, right?
No.
So we just wanna make sure, you know, so issuing a permit, we can make sure that all those other regulations are met.
I just wonder how, you know, code enforcement is gonna regulate.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, you get the building permit once, I mean, how you police, like, if they get a different pool, or...
Yeah.
I don't know.
Right, which are only, so we're just gonna get another one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be very difficult for us to regulate this. It's gonna be a lot more time spent on it.
But I mean, that was our code all along, it just was more...
Well, there's no code saying you have to issue building permits, but there's no other way for us to...
But there's code that the electricity going to it should have been inspected, right?
Right. For anything above twenty-four inches.
I mean, is that common not to have to have? I always thought, I don't know where I thought that you had to have a fence around your pool, but it's common just to have the structure of the pool be the fence?
It's written in the code.
Is that something you're familiar with, or?
I'm not familiar either way, so I think that's...
I know a lot of the above, permanent ones that are above have the fences around the top of it.
Right. It just seems four feet doesn't seem like a whole lot for a kid who wants to go in the pool.
And, you know, we even...
And then they're stuck in there, you know? If they get in there, then they're stuck, right? I don't know.
There, we even discovered, as we were researching the code, that even the in-ground pools, a fence isn't required if you have on-the-electric covers, that you can push the button and it would cover it up, according to the code.
Was there any discussion in the building committee about fences and stuff?
So my discussion, I mean, really what comes out, I mean, what is a portable pool? I mean, or temporary pool? I mean, the one in question that the resident had probably holds, I don't know, three thousand gallons of water. In my mind, that's not a temporary pool.
Right.
And it's got a filter, and...
I can give you the definition of an on-ground portable pool. It's a, a pool which can be disassembled for storage or transport that includes portable pools with flexible or non-flexible or non-grid walls that achieve their structural integrity by means of a uniform shape, a support frame, or a combination therein that can be disassembled for storage or relocation. Barrier, a fence, a wall, building wall or combination thereof which surrounds the pool and obstructs access to the swimming pool. So it's not just a fence, but it's those other things too. But there's no, and then the definition of an actual swimming pool is any structure intended for swimming or recreational bathing that contains water over twenty-four inches deep, that includes in-ground, above-ground, and on-ground swimming pools, hot tubs, spas, fixed-in-place leading pools. So they don't give you like a specific, you know, measurement for the portable pool. It's just, it's just the structure of it. And, but a swimming pool in itself, they give the depth. And then, and it, they're called on-ground.
Basically, what determines right or wrong is what the pool is made out of.
Right, if it's collapsible or not.
Right.
So it could be an eight-foot-deep pool, if it's collapsible, it's a temporary pool.
Right.
Right? But then what, I don't know, but, but we're saying that we're gonna require a building permit for anything over twenty-four inches, correct?
Right.
And obviously, you know, electric, make sure that's correct.
And that's the same for any, either whether it's in-ground, on-ground...
Right.
Or above-ground. Where it's put, is that pool is really close to the sidewalk, yeah.
But because it's made out of plastic or rubber, it doesn't require a fence?
No, no, those, in-ground, like I said, in-ground doesn't require a fence.
Or I should say, what does require a fence?
Nothing, not, no, none of them necessarily, it just, they all require some kind of barrier.
So an in-ground, if the in-ground didn't have that, that electric slideover...
Yeah.
To keep people, like, you could walk on that slideover.
Yeah.
But if you didn't have that, you would definitely have to have a fence around it.
Right.
Or kind of keep it closed.
Because there's no way that would, you'd be able to have an in-ground have, you know, or, you know, some kind of barrier. Could be a wall, could be a fence, or it could be a combination thereof. All pools need some kind of barrier.
But a wall or a fence is a permanent fixture to keep people out. The cover would keep them out, I guess, I don't know that much about it, if it's...
If it's closed.
Closed.
Right.
But it's not a permanent barrier.
It's a barrier, it's a barrier.
You know, we, the consensus was, we didn't wanna reinvent the wheel with the international or National Building Code. I mean, it's well documented.
But we got, it's the National Building Code.
Yes, so.
That we've already adopted.
I mean, on a personal opinion, it just seemed like trying to define what's portable, what's not, is really like the harder issue.
I guess when we drive by in January, it's still up, people know.
But we really don't, now we're just saying, anything over twenty-four inches, it's gotta have a building permit.
Right.
It doesn't really matter if it's temporary or not, right?
No, no. And what's gonna be hard in that instance is defining where the rear yard is because pools, all pools have to be in the rear yard. So all swimming pools, or swimming pools, hot tubs, pools, spas, they all have to be in the rear yard that are over twenty-four inches, because that's the definition of a swimming pool. And now, what you're gonna have to do is determine on a lot, which can all be very wonky.
Or have just a side lot, and no actual backyard of the house.
Right, so we have to, we'll have to make the determination of what is the rear yard. And in that instance, that's gonna be difficult.
What puts difficulty?
And then it has to be ten feet from the house. And then, so it might not be doable for some yards.
So you're saying it's a corner lot, and there's no real, they don't have a back, you know, real deep backyard?
Or they have two rear yards, that could be, so it could be okay there. If a corner lot, yeah.
Anyway, so will you take any action on this at all? I mean, we're just, we're not, it's in our code.
Right, no, there's just...
And we just directed the building department to require permits, anything over twenty-four inches, so...
And then we've also taken the steps here too, if you've noticed, we're updating our forms in our website because they were outdated on the website, which you noticed the resident was pointing to some old outdated information, and so that's not good, so...
So can our code enforcement guy kind of, can he take a survey around town and, you know, maybe leave a note and say, hey, in the spring, if you want this pool, you're gonna need a building permit?
Yes.
Just to get my heads up.
We'll keep it busy till winter, no vacations for him.
All right. Okay, item H, road design of eighty-eighth Avenue relating to travel center improvements.
Oh, and if I could, trustee Marevka has got ideas for the pools, this may be, we want to put some, these two for the public and put some on our website, just kind of let people know that this is coming, so...
Okay, sounds good.
Sorry.
Nope. So eighty-eighth Avenue, is that Troy's or is it yours?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna set it up for Troy, and then he's gonna take it over, that's all right. So you got a couple maps in your, in your packet, and, and so eighty-eighth Avenue is the road that we're looking at improving for the travel center. And so you've probably heard about it before, but we wanted to bring this back to your attention because the devil's in the details, as it were, and maybe you weren't maybe necessarily familiar with how the floor improvements were, have been proposed all along. But, so we wanted to bring them to your attention and talk about them just a little bit so you're aware and you're understanding what's been submitted to the review agencies, Will dot and I dot. But eighty-eighth Avenue has been proposed as kind of a, and this may be, don't be alarmed by this, but a rural, kind of a rural road, and Troy can correct my names off, but it's, so it's just, so basically, there's no curb and gutter here, so, you know, that's what's been proposed versus curb and gutter, so. We just wanted to kind of tell you why, and maybe some of the pros and cons to having kind of this rural road versus a curb and gutter road, and just kind of picture input and go from there, so. With that...
Yeah, so like Amy said, the road is always proposed as a rural cross-section, which means there's a shoulder and a ditch, and then the road has a cross slope on it, usually two percent, which gets the water off the road and into the ditch. This is a rural area, you know, obviously, there's potential for future development, but when they did the concept plan, this is what they proposed, and it kind of makes sense with what's out there right now. Wilmington Piutown Road is a rural cross-section with a ditch, but that's gonna change anytime soon. The big thing is, you know, making the drainage work, which will work either with a rural cross-section or urban cross-section, as far as curb and gutter and storm sewer. So some of the pros for the rural cross-section is, obviously, it's a lot less expensive as far as the cost of the concrete curbs, the cost of the storm sewer, which is why, you know, one of the big reasons it was proposed that way. And the surrounding area being rural, so I wanted to make sure, and Amy did too, that the board knew that this is what was proposed, because I know there's a lot of talk about, you know, the villagers like the curb and gutter, you know? In this part of town, I just wanted to get your thoughts on it, and let you know what was proposed right now. And I could give you some pros and cons, oh, if you'd like them. So for curb and gutter, pro is, you know, it's, it kind of meets the village code for a new collector road. This isn't a new road, but you're reconstructing it. The look, I know a lot of people like the look of curb and gutter, just aesthetically. Trucks, trucks are probably more likely to stay in the pavement when turning, you know, they have kind of a barrier to block them. The road is being designed for trucks anyways, so really, it shouldn't be a problem to trucks for, you know, if the road, you know, compromising the structure of the road, it's gonna be, you know, a strong section and wide turns for trucks. The other pro is, maybe, you know, the builders be more prepared for a lot of future, for a lot of future development as expected in this quarter, and then, you know, if that's the way you want to go in the future, curb and gutter might be a better option. But I guess the question is, is it a better option right now, just because of the cost is so much more, and you don't know what's coming down the road, you know, across the street or down the road. So some of the cons for curb and gutter is the big thing is the cost. In addition to curb and gutter, storm sewer, catch basins, end sections, it, without getting in exactly how much storm sewer we would need, the extra cost would be two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand more.
And so what's the cost, I mean, what's the total?
Yeah, so what's the total? The current, as it's shown now, that estimate is at like one point five million for the entire job. Wilmington Road, you know, lot that too.
So you're talking about twenty percent more.
So, yeah, it might bring it up to one eighty million, if you, if you change it to that. Kind of another, just in this area, eighty-eighth Avenue is pretty flat, so it's kind of a challenge to get the storm sewer to work like you want it. We can, you know, we can make it happen, but some of the structures might be sticking up out of the ground in a hard way just because it's so flat, and you have to get proper slope on storm sewer for it to work properly. There would also need to be some ditches, even if you have storm sewer, just because of the way that the elevation of the road with relation to the farm fields are, because you don't want your water going down to the farm field. Wilmington Road is currently a rural, so it, you know, a cross-section matches up better with it. Not to say you can't transition, you know, but the maintenance of the storm sewer, it's not a huge deal. You know, sometimes storm sewer gets clogged up or fails, and it's, you know, a process to maintain it, so. Just wanted to let you discuss, you know, from there, give you some information.
At this point, eighty-eighth Avenue would still just be a two-lane?
It would still be widened, it would, it would be widened to a three-lane, which means...
Turning lane?
Yeah, there'd be a turning lane slash center median, you know, depending where, where you're at. So the road would be, and the lanes would be wider, a lot wider, there'd be twelve-foot lanes. Right now, the whole road is like twenty feet wide, so it'd still be significantly wider. It's currently showing a one-foot asphalt shoulder, which is straight, and then a three-foot stone shoulder, so a four-foot shoulder before it starts to drop off to a ditch. The ditches along eighty-eighth aren't very steep, so it's not very noticeable, like you can't see a big ditch or, you know, something dangerous, it's, they're pretty shallow ditches.
You're talking just the curb on eighty-eighth, not like a curb wrapping around on two, if you're still wanting to?
We, if, if there was curb on eighty-eighth, we'd have to see where Will, Will County would allow. You know, they might not want it at all, or they might make, they have you transition somewhere in the curve. Because I know they don't want the curb and gutter right now, you know, unless it was improved.
I just noticed a lot of those big mud holes, sinkholes, and like Route forty-five and Piutown, Wilmington Road, kind of that. Somebody put a sign there, called it the Pritzker Pot Hole, I think. And there's another one on Piutown, Wilmington Road and Route fifty-three. And I think it happens from the trucks cutting the corner short, the trailer tires get into the software, the shoulder on the edge of the ditch, and then makes a giant wall of them. I'd hate to see something like that develop, but other than that, I mean, three hundred thousand's a lot of money.
The, the, you know, they have curb and gutter on Route fifty and Wilmington Road there, and those trucks still, they go over that curb, and they create a big hole on the other side.
That's a good point.
But, I mean, that's, I think part of that is just because of that angle they have to turn. Hopefully, these will be angled better.
In those cases, it's probably that it's an older design, and it wasn't meant for trucks to start with. You know, we're doing this fresh, this intersection, so the, the radius of the turns is gonna be large enough for trucks to make the little bit without turning on.
The only, I mean, I know twenty percent more is a lot, but like in five years, if we had other development there and they're like, well, you know, let's make this road all curb and gutter, it's gonna be a lot more than that to transition it to a curb and gutter, right?
Yeah.
So...
You might be able to use, utilize TIP funds at that point.
Right, well, I mean, so, we can utilize the TIP funds to pay for this, no matter what, I mean, that's the whole idea, right? So I don't know, it's either we're gonna pay for it now or pay for it later. I mean, if our, if this takes off like we want it to, I mean, I, personally, I'd like to see the curb and gutters put in right away and make it look nicer. You know, it's not like we're just doing this and just hoping this is the only thing that goes in there.
Three hundred thousand, a twenty-three million dollar project is, I mean, it's a lot of money, but it's not. And I think it's the difference between looking professional and sharp, and not having those broken-off edges in the, like you're talking about, and you see it everywhere. I'd say let's not go by other chief, let's do it right, and not look back.
The road improvements, refresh my memory, is, was Mr. Patel putting those in, and then he was gonna get reimbursed from the tip?
Correct.
Okay. So have you talked to him about this at all?
Did we get reimbursed? No, we haven't, we wanted to get your sense from you first, and we have... We haven't, we wanted to get your sense from you first, and we have not started working on his redevelopment agreement yet.
Because otherwise, we'd be paying double almost, like, we'd be paying so much now, and then, like, five years from now, we paying just move on.
You're saying if you wanted to add curb and gutter in the future?
Yes, down the road.
Unless down the road it didn't get done, then it just became another big debt, you know, yeah.
All right, so, I mean, I'm getting the sense from the board that we would like to have curb and gutter there. And so do we need to take any action? Or I mean, I guess I said you need to discuss it with Mr. Patel and, I, it, just add another note along we're talking about. So you kind of, what is the status of that development out there? Where, where are we at? What are we waiting on?
Um, well, it's all been approved, obviously, from your end, so now it's us waiting for a letter of credit to get approved on Mr. Patel's side. He's got a construction schedule he's working on, um, where the, um, I'll let Troy give you an update on, on where he is with the road designs which have been submitted.
Yeah, the road design has been submitted to Will County Hyatt apartment. They, they gave me comments back, they weren't, weren't very bad, it's a lot of history notes and stuff that they want for, you know, construction inspection and everything. I will, if it did get changed to curb and gutter, I'd have to resubmit to them, I, I will have to resubmit anyway, but obviously there'll be more planned changes. Um, it was submitted to I dot twice now, I just sent the second submit to I dot last week. They asked for additional traffic study and transportation management plan. They're mostly concerned about the I fifty-seven ramps and how it's gonna affect those. You know, I told them it's not really going to affect them as far as construction, because we're not touching them other than just kind of some striping leading up to the widening, the, you know, the guard rail. So we're gonna see how they respond to that after they look at the traffic study and the, the plan that I've submitted. So they, they might have more road comments coming, I think their initial reviews were about the traffic and how it would affect the ramps. And as far as the actual travel center, we've done one review on their plan set that they submitted there for their final engineering. There's still a lot of comments that need to be addressed, mostly on the drainage end, so, um, we're gonna meet with their engineer this week to go over some of the comments and try to get some stuff worked out. So their plans are still in the works, they have not made a second seal to us yet. And they might be slowing down until we get the road stuff, you know, more from I dot possibly, something like.
And then, were they, weren't they supposed to go back to the planning commission for a final landscape plan too? So that needs to happen as well? All right, so do you need anything else from us on this? Do you need a motion, do you need?
I don't think so, I think we have a sense of what you're, what you want, so.
Yeah, and I did.
And we can, we can go back and work on it from our end.
And if we're gonna do some redesign on the, to, you know, with the storm sewer, we're, I guess, on the south side of eighty-eight, you know, sou- south of Pito Wilmington Road, Wilmington Road, um, maybe I advise that part stays. Or maybe just for a portion curb and gutter, and then drop it off where we start to taper back to the existing road, so.
Is that something?
You mean on the other side?
I mean, the south side of Wilmington-Pito Road.
Well, we need just a little bit of that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just, the south side of eighty-eight, or south side of Wilmington Road, eighty, on eighty-eight, sorry.
Down here.
Yeah, just because we need to widen it just to match the north part, just for a short distance. So we'll have to work with Will County on how they, what they're gonna allow.
So, so south of Wilmington Road on eighty, I didn't know we were doing anything on eighty-eighth.
We annexed all that property down there.
But we're gonna do something at that interchange at the, so, so that's Wilmington Road, this is eighty-eight?
Yes.
We're, we're gonna do something there?
Yeah, we need to widen it just so it matches up.
Oh, okay.
The north part, and it's only gonna go over a couple hundred feet, then taper back down to the, like, existing roads.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I'm okay leaving that, that makes sense.
Yeah, the road, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, once the, we got the ball looked over there, we can have a deal like that.
Not yet.
Okay. All right.
So we can add some.
Next item on the agenda is I's, a motion to authorize the filing of a complaint for injunction demolition and other relief pursuant to the sixty-five I L S C S five dash eleven dash three one dash one, or two oh seven North Hickory. This was an item we were considering going to an executive session with, but I said I think we can talk about this in open session. And, um, Amy, if you wanna go ahead and.
Sure.
Get us an update.
So if you may recall, that two oh seven North Hickory is, um, Mr. Presto owns this kind of shell of a home with it, it's, it's just the frame, and it has no windows or doors, and it's very wide open and accessible. And, um, so we're very concerned, uh, uh, with safety of kids because it holds, when it rains, it holds water in the basement, and it does have stairs. And so, you know, Tom Pinky, our village inspector, you know, he, he runs kids out of it all the time. They go, they go in and play in it. So we've, um, with your permission, you know, did, um, put a condemnation notice on it. So we, we do wanna kinda go forward with, with, um, getting it boarded up so that, you know, it's not accessible. And, um, you know, really, that's the goal. We don't, we don't necessarily want to, um, you know, own this. We would like to see it, you know, utilized and, and brought forth to full fruition of a home and see it sold into the community and have the neighbors looking at a nice, fully developed home next door. What we do have to do is file this injunction for demolition or other relief. What we do wanna do is board it up, put a lien on the property so we can recover our money. That would, but we don't know that that'll be the end of it, so this is just how the complaint reads. And, uh, but we would need your position, your permission, because this really is litigation, uh, potential litigation. And, um, we did try to send a letter ahead of, go ahead and filing this injunction to ask Mr. Presto to go ahead and just with his own funds, go ahead and board it up, even if it was just, you know, on the, at the bottom level so that it's not accessible to kids. And we have not heard anything back, so, um, I think it's probably, um, you know, in the best interest of the neighborhood and the village to go ahead and go forward with this and get it, get it taken care of. It's been two years, uh, that it's been sitting like this, so I think it's, um, ti- uh, uh, enough time has gone by that it's been accessible. We've been kinda lucky that nobody's been hurt to this point.
Let's see, so if we go ahead and board it up, then what? Can it sit there for another year?
Yeah, okay.
Please do.
Sure, so, so the way these, uh, work under the statute is, we've sent them a notice, we've asked them to do this, he hasn't. So then you go ahead and you file this complaint, and they'll be served with it. They either appear in court, at which point a judge says, hey, what are you gonna do here? This needs to be addressed and boarded up, and they'll do it then hopefully. Or they may not appear, um, in which case the judge is, you know, potentially gonna enter default judgment and ask us what we wanna do, and, and what we're seeking to be able to do then is to go ahead and board it up ourselves. One of the nic- nice things about this statute is, is you can get all your attorney's fees as a lien, all your costs related to this. It's all lien against the property, which you have the ability to foreclose on. The, the difficulty of these is, if you board it up and still not addressing it or doing anything else, you know, you gotta think to yourself, well, what do we wanna do here? And, and so one of the options under this is kind of the nuclear scenario is asking the judge, can we just tear it down? Again, with the costs all being, all being on the property. But, but, you know, one, one of the goals of this is just to get somebody's attention who's not giving you the attention. Get them under the jurisdiction of the court where the court can issue these orders saying, you got, you have to take these steps and address it. And so if we can get them before the court and work something out where they've boarded it up, you can continue it for long periods of time where the court kinda just keep ta-